Please.
So.
Second?
Maybe didn't. Okay, alright.
You're second?
Yeah, I'll second. Oh, okay.
Uh, any questions? Roll call.
Roa.
Hi.
Donahue.
Hi.
Bataiglia.
Hi.
Mangela Bittner.
Hi.
Sterns.
Hi. Uh, Andy, do we have anybody signed in to speak to council?
We don't have a sign-in sheet, Your Honor, but no, I don't believe anyone's here this evening. We've got the B team tonight, it seems.
Uh, it's okay. Uh, communications. Okay, nothing? Are we sure? Manager's report, Andy?
Uh, Your Honor, we'll just start off with, um, Debbie had just handed out to you, we'll start with the proposed budget schedule. If you look at the handout that Debbie just handed out prior to the meeting. So November 6th, which is our regular meeting, uh, at 4:15 PM, not four o'clock, we'll correct that and email it out to you, is just a, our standard meeting where I will deliver to council the, the budget. Uh, and we'll conduct the budget presentation and then we'll hand out the budget document. The following Wednesday, we propose to have the first required public hearing at 5:45 PM that evening, um, followed by a 6:00 PM study session on the budget and you'll see the sections, uh, of budget proposed for review, their rec, the rec authority. Typically, we have representatives from the authority present at that meeting, uh, police, fire, and we'll review the parking fund. The following Wednesday, November 20th, is a regular meeting. We would proceed that meeting with a second public hearing on the budget at 5:45 PM, followed by the regular council meeting at 6:00, uh, then followed by a special such, study session on the budget where you'll see we review Public Works, the Treasurer, City Clerk, City Manager, Council, Solicitor, Finance, General Government, and Special Funds. Then, fast forward to December 4th, that's again our regular meeting, um, that's proposed first and second reading of the budget at a 4:15 meeting, and then followed by third and final reading of the budget at our regularly scheduled December 18th meeting. I talked to Councilman Roa, just, I had sometime, in the past, we've sometimes had an extra meeting, um, to review certain sections of the budget. I don't know if council's interested in adding that now that we would advertise, I mean, we could cancel that meeting if we determined that it wasn't necessary.
That'd be the one before Thanksgiving.
So if we were to do it a week later, uh, the, if we're following the Wednesday schedule, would be, the following Wednesday would be Thanksgiving Eve, I'm guessing that no one's interested in meeting on Thanksgiving Eve.
Unless you have turkey.
I will say the City Manager's not interested in meeting on Thanksgiving Eve, so I would, if we wanted to schedule now, I would suggest maybe Tuesday, the 26th, uh, for additional meeting.
Which probably was if we went ahead and advertised for it now, and then if we don't use it.
We cancel it.
We just cancel it.
What time?
Uh, what do you, what do you think? Um, we could do an evening, 6 o'clock, we could do a, I mean.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, that's fine.
Sean?
Yeah, that's good.
Alright, we would propose then to add to this schedule Tuesday, November 26th at 6:00 PM, and we'll, as we advance through the budget, we'll determine whether that meeting is necessary, but we will advertise it, so, um, so council's comfortable with these dates, then we will advertise these special meetings as required, the public hearings and special study sessions.
John, did you hear that about the schedule for the, uh?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have on that one, then we'll.
Andy, I do have a question while we're talking about that real quick. With the Recreation Authority, do they have their budget already done by then? Will get a copy prior to that?
They'll have a draft.
They'll have a draft, they'll have a proposed, um, I'm gonna work on it next week with Aaron, so perhaps we may by, by that time, um, by the time they're, when are they coming, November 13th? That'll be close to whether it'll be approved or not, um, 'cause I'm not sure if their meeting will have been, um, but they'll have it.
It'd be nice if we had that prior to meeting with them, so if we had any questions that we would be able to.
Well, we'll have a draft, I mean, a good draft, they, they just perhaps might not have voted on, adopted it yet.
'Cause I'm not sure if they've done that in the past or not, I think they have, but I'm not sure. But it'd be easier for us to have that prior to meeting with them, so if we had any questions. That's all I got.
Okay. Just in terms of an update on delinquent stormwater fee collections, um, as of the, as of yesterday, um, we had received $41,000 in delinquent payments, um, and we have 28 payment agreements signed in place. So we're, we're making some progress in terms of collections. Uh, I wish to thank council, members of the public who attended the ribbon cutting, uh, and, and staff who helped prepare, Gary Johnson, Katie Wickert, Debbie Coral, in preparing for the ribbon cutting in HP Way Park, that was held last Friday evening. So thank you to council and all the members of the public that attended. Our leave collection schedule is, was published in the Meadville Tribune, um, there's some hard copies available here at the city building, and it's available on our website. There, um, will begin on Monday, so next week, next Monday is the beginning of the collection runs and rounds.
Andy, could I ask one question?
Sure.
On your monthly report, the stormwater user fee is over budget, is that because that, that $40,000 is in there?
So by, this is by the end of September, so letters would not have gone out yet at this point, or close, so that would not reflect, um, the delinquent budget, so.
So we're over budget? Good.
Um, so we're, yeah, it looks like we're about on budget, it shows slightly higher than budget, so, um, we'll check that figure, but I, it's, it's an accurate figure, but it does not collect a delinquent, can reflect a delinquency, so.
It might make up for some of these other.
Now, that said, the article in the paper did generate some additional revenue preceding the formal letters going out, so.
Good.
In that sense, it would.
I was thinking something around the 10,000 range before the letters really kind of went out, I, I think there was a number that Tru said, yeah.
Do we have a balance of what hasn't been paid or a guesstimate of that balance?
Um, honestly, no, I don't.
We started about 250,000 out, so we're probably around the $200,000 mark still of delinquent if we collected the 4U1 that I shared with you, roughly.
Our earnings tax, on the other hand, is behind schedule.
But I think it's based on when it comes in, isn't it? When you enter the deposits, or something? So we, we only pull in once a month, um, like from Burkhyma, we only pull in once a month from that, it should be, that should be up to date too as of that date, and the, so it should be September, yeah.
We still have.
I'm just comparing it to 2018, which was pegged at 963.
Yeah, so.
Year-to-date.
So that 963 year-to-date was when Ainsworth sold to Smuckers, there were bon, employee bonuses that were issued, and the earnings tax from those is really what elevated that figure, um, which, which really boosted the earnings revenue overall in 2018. So if you go back to 2017, it looks like we're ahead by almost $30,000 of where we were year-to-date on 2017. Anything else on the monthly report at this point? I'll note that at our November 6th meeting is when we, council left to take action on authorizing signatures on the CDVG application for the next fiscal year. Staff at, right now, primarily Gary, um, Katie's been participating, Bennett and Mary Anne have been doing sort of, uh, their blight surveys, and Gary, do you want to talk about sort of why we're doing that effort and what we're doing to collect data?
Sure, the, under the CDVG rules, um, in order to be able to use the money for code enforcement, uh, throughout the city, we need to have a certain percentage of the city's structures being deemed blighted, um, so we've been going around to every structure in the city and doing reviews of them, using a, an app that Bennett developed, um, to be able to get pictures and information on each, each par, each parcel, each property to determine if they're blighted or not. I think we're at the tail end of that, and I think we're, we need to get about 1050, deliver a thousand properties, we need to reach that level, I think we got there, and we're at about 850 or so now that are considered blighted in standards that we're using, so, we're in the tail end of that, we should be, get to that point, and once we get there, we'll be good to go. It's just for code enforcement purposes.
We'll share that data at the next meeting. One of the improvement projects at Bison Antonio Park, uh, and funded through, primarily through donations from the Rotary Club, are interpretive signs on the history and, uh, history and founding of Meadville, so telling the David Mead log, David Me, founding story of Meadville and the log cabin. Can we mute? We can probably mute so that, then he won't hear us.
Hey, John, we can hear you.
Everybody what?
You can hear everything that's in the background.
Charge to.
Did have to mute.
He should, he should mute his phone on his side.
John, do you know how to, do you know how to mute your phone on your side?
Not yet. I got somebody here rolling, I don't know, I didn't hear it up here, you can start.
Sounds like you're at the casino, just kidding.
Did that turn it off?
Yeah, it seems to, yeah.
Just turn it down.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
How to mute this?
Then we won't hear him if he tries to talk, so. Yeah, I, I'll leave it as is.
Hey, John? You're John?
Yeah, he's muted.
I just figured it out. Alright, let's move on.
Okay. Alright, okay, how to mute it now?
Okay, alright.
I'll have to leave it on though, because otherwise we won't hear him. Uh, okay, so then just, just a few dates, oh, so the signs of Bison Antonio Park, so we, um, interpretive signs interpreting the history of the founding of Meadville, um, French Creek history and ecology, and, and also then the Mead Avenue Bridge, those signs are in, should be installed yet this fall, um, but they're large, 24 by 36, um, interpretive sign panels, uh, funded by the Rotary Club, so we're excited about that project to, um, take care of that. And then just a few dates coming up, events, uh, the Saturdays Make a Difference Day, which kicks off in Diamond Park early on Saturday morning, Trick or Treat next Thursday evening, the 24th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, the Halloween Parade at 6:30 PM, the route is the same as it has been for a number of years now, starts, lines up on South Main Street, comes north, comes around Diamond Park, down Chestnut Street, heading west to Market Street, and then north on Market Street to Walnut, I think is where it officially ends, um, Walnut or North Street. So again, that's Saturday, um, the 26th, um, at 6:30 PM, and then there's an event here, I think the Meadville Neighborhood Center, again, has probably two or three years running now, offered a trunk or treat event on Halloween itself on October 31st in Diamond Park. Uh, and that's all I have for now, Your Honor. Also on our agenda then, though, would be, um, the 2018 audit report, and Clint Mattern is here, if you're ready for Clint?
Yep.
Alright, Clint, come on up.
Alright, everyone should have a book there in front of you, with Mattern CPA on it, saying 2018, the audit we're gonna go over. First, before we get into the audit, I want to thank Debbie and the Finance Department. Whenever we, whenever I perform the audit, I'm normally out here about a week, week and a half, asking lots of fun questions, documents and all that fun stuff, and, uh, they provided everything in a nice, timely manner, so I'll give a thank you to them. So now if we start into the audit, uh, pages one and two, and three is your independent auditor's report. On the left side on page one, uh, management's responsibility is, is for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with the accounting principles generally accepted in the US. The section below that, the auditor's responsibility, uh, the first foremost is to express an opinion on your financial statements, which we'll get into shortly on page two. The paragraph below that deals with auditing the internal controls of the city. Standards is we don't profess an opinion on your, on your internal controls, but if there's any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, we're required to disclose it, which is near the tail end of the audit. If we go on to page two, this is your qual, this is your opinion. I'll highlight the third paragraph and explain the fiduciary funds part. So under unmodified opinions, I'll read that, "In my opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund other than the fiduciary funds, the City of Meadville as of December 31st, 2018." So there is a qualified opinion issued, and it's because of, on the fiduciary funds, uh, the city elects to have the state audit your pension funds, um, and the state does it on a two-year basis, so by the time the state's done, that audit's not available for whenever I perform your yearly audit. So the qualification's just on your pension, otherwise what this paragraph is saying, it's unmodified other than that exception. The paragraph below that is new this year, under other matters, it's an italicized bold, um, and it's gonna be a constant item that I go back to, is relating to Gatsby 75, uh, it's a new item for the City of Meadville for 2018. Uh, it relates to your other post-employment benefits other than pensions, so if anytime I say OPEB, that's what I'm referring to, is other post-employment benefits, um, and that's mostly talking about your health insurance type benefits that get paid out, uh, down the road that your actuary projects out. Uh, but, uh, when the standard was implemented, I had to adjust your government-wide, um, beginning net position, and there was an adjustment of $395,000, so that's disclosed in this paragraph. Uh, there is also management discussion analysis paragraphs, along with budgetary comparison paragraph, and your management discussion analysis is the next section of the audit, pages three through 17. Uh, this is composed, composed by Debbie and Andy, uh, it gives a nice descriptive detail of your projects that occurred during the year, uh, for the City of Meadville, along with wrapping in the financial data and providing kind of an overall picture, uh, for 2018. Uh, since it was composed internally, I do recommend reading it, but for time's sake, we're not gonna go into each page of those, uh, we'll go into detail if you now go to page 18. Page 18A and 18B, this starts your state, um, government-wide financial statements, these are on the full accrual basis, uh, this is gonna be your statement of net position, it's where on 18A, the left side, those are your assets, on the right side on 18B is gonna be your liabilities and net position. It's presented in a four-column format, your governmental activities in the first column, uh, business-type activities, anytime I say business-type activities, that's referring to your parking fund, and then the Meadville Area Sewer Authority, this is your component unit, uh, for government-wide purposes, it's required to be disclosed, uh, on your statement of net position and your statement of activities. So in the middle of the page, I'll highlight some of the totals, your total current assets in the third column was for 14,000, 40,00680, a majority of that is making up your cash and cash equivalents, which is the third column, first number of 10,893. The other portion is relating to your notes receivable, 1.8 million. Next section is your non-current assets, uh, for government-wide purposes, your fixed assets do get capitalized and depreciated. Uh, the third column near the bottom, your total of your note, non-current was 45,268, majority of that is made up of your fixed assets and your notes receivable. Uh, your notes receivable, there's a footnote, uh, that breaks down what composes that amount. Your bonds payable, some of those, they're issued to the city, but some of them are for the Water Authority and the Sewer Authority, so then the city creates a note to those authorities, and that's what these receivables are, are recording those amounts to come in. So your total current assets, non-current assets, third column bottom of the page is 63,922,000. Page 18B, uh, top part of the page is your current liabilities, uh, and middle of the page is your non-current liabilities. Total current liabilities, third column, is 3.8 million dollars, a majority of that, 2.7 million, is relating to your current portion, your long-term debt. Your non-current liabilities, which is in the middle of the page, the total of that was 68,313,000, of that, majority of that is your bonds payable, which is 49 million. The line right above the bonds payable in the middle of the page there is net pension liability. This amount, and we'll touch a basis on it also in your fiduciary statements, this liability did jump up, uh, based off the actuary report, uh, last year that liability is around 7, 7.7 million dollars, as of December 31st, 2018, that jumped up to 12.5 million, so there's a large increase, and as we get further in the audit, I can explain some of that further as we get to some of that more detailed information. Line item above, above that is Gatsby 75, that is the OPEB liability, uh, it's at the 3.2 million dollars, um, prior year that was at 2.8 million, based off a prior standard, uh, so based off the actuary report, that did go up about 400,000 dollars, and there is a footnote at the, and note T, I believe, that we'll get into, that will show the detail of that liability. So you combine the liabilities along with your net position, you get to 63,922, which ties out to your total assets on page 18A. Page 19 is your statement of activities. Top left of the page is your expenses broken down by your governmental activities, uh, below that is your business-type activities, your parking fund, and below that is your component unit. Uh, how to read this schedule is you go top left, work your way to the right, uh, and then you work your way down on the bottom right-hand of the page, so you go from expenses to charges specifically related to those activities, and then when you get to the bottom right-hand page, working your way down, there's general revenues, this is where your tax revenue is, um, transfer revenue that's coming in along with your investment earnings and your grant earnings. For government-wide purposes, your change in net position, which is the bottom right-hand page, is at 1.7 decrease, giving you a net position at the end of the year of 9.6 million, and we'll get into some reconciliations between the fund balance and your government-wide, that'll show you the major differences when you're looking at the two different types of statements. Page 20 starts your fund balance. This is gonna be on the modified cash basis, uh, you can see it's broken down a lot differently, it's broken down by your funds. Major funds are disclosed there, first column, your general fund, it was at 2.4 million in assets, majority of that making up is your cash and cash equivalents, along with your cap, accounts receivable, 359,000, uh, which there's a footnote that breaks that down, but majority of that's your refuse. Third column over is your special revenue, uh, it was at 5.2 million, fourth column over is your capital projects, total assets were 4.3 million, capital projects at December 31st had a very large increase, uh, in, uh, statement of activities, your income along with your balance sheet, uh, because the, um, bond proceeds came in during the year. So last year, your, was at 2 million, this year jumped up to 4.3 million, 'cause your bond proceeds came in, n, next year, the next few years, as that money's being used, that's when you'll see the cash, cash equivalents coming back down to more comparable to prior years. But your total assets for all your funds, right-hand of the page there in the middle, is 12,979,139. Middle of the page here is your liabilities, uh, just highlight your total liabilities for fund purposes, is at 2,164, combine that with your fund balances, was it, the 12,979,139. Pages 21 and 23 are the reconciliations I was talking about, that does reconcile between your, um, fund balance and your government-wide net position, the equity, and page 23 reconciles between the change in net posi, net position between the two of them, more or less it's how it gets reported differently between the two structures, between full accrual and modified cash basis. So we'll go to page 22, this is your combined statement of revenue expenses broken down by funds. Uh, one item to highlight would be in the fourth column, under capital projects, there's 169,136 from the column of, this is for the Mount Market House electrical upgrades, so that's a larger amount than it was in prior years because of that project and money coming in for it. You work your way down that capital projects column, there's a capital outlay of 1.1 million on these statements, see, this gets expensed, whereas on the government-wide, that would have been, most of that gets capitalized. Second column, your debt service fund, about the middle of the page, you can see the number 2.4 million, this relates to your principal payments, the government-wide, this gets applied against your liabilities, but for fund balance, it gets expensed. So for your general fund, you work down to the bottom of the page, third line from the bottom, you'll see you had a positive general fund of 119,115 during the year, giving a fund balance for your general fund of 1,499,056. Fourth column over there again, third line from the bottom on page 22, had 2.2 million increase, again, that's related to the bond proceeds coming in, so it's gonna show a large fund increase, at the far right-hand of the page is 2.5 million, with a large amount of that relating to your co, capital project increase. Next set of statements is on page 24, this is your parking fund. Uh, in the middle of the page there, your parking fund had total assets of 6.7 million. Uh, below that is your liabilities, your total current liabilities was 885,000, uh, two items in there, 'cause your parking fund is on full accrual, 'cause you do have a net pension liability that's allocated to it, along with the OPEB, uh, Gatsby 75, there's now 19,000 allocated to your parking fund, uh, to give you that total current liabilities of the 885. Uh, you combine that with your total long-term liabilities, along with your net position, gives you the 6.7 million agreeing to your total assets, um, above. Page 25, this is your statement of revenue expenses specifically for the parking fund. I'll just highlight the third line from the bottom, you did have a change in net position, a decrease of 255,248, I would highlight though that part of that is your depreciation and amortization of your fixed assets of 238,520, so that shows a, a larger decrease, I think last year was about 170,000, remember the depreciation and amortization does come into play, along with, uh, for cash purposes during the year, the market, uh, square deck rehab occurred in 2018, and that's what we'll highlight in page 26 for your cash flow. The section called Cash Flows from Investing Activities, you can see the acquisition of fixed assets had a negative 228,142, that's relating to the deck rehab project. So if you work your way down to about two-thirds of the way down, net decrease in cash, cash equivalents was 233,255, uh, of which you had a major project involved that assisted with that decrease in cash. So you had a cash, cash equivalents at the end of the year of 622,346. Next couple pages are your fiduciary funds, um, I'm gonna highlight the second column, the pension, uh, you can see your total assets was at 33 million, last year on the audit, that, that balance was 36,821, so you, so you can see it had about 3.6 million decrease. And if we go to page 28, I'll highlight the second column also, again, uh, the, uh, the market, as compared to 17 and 18, 17 had a good year to where that negative 3.187 was a positive in last year's number, last year's audit, 3.6. The market in 2018 for your pension funds wasn't, wasn't good at the end of 2018, so it showed a decrease of the 3,187,781, which assisted with the increase of your pension liability, um, that we'll see in the footnotes, and that we saw in your, uh, government-wide financial statements where it is capital, or it is recorded as a liability. The rest, majority of the rest of the audit is your footnotes. Slide-wise, it'd be a couple slides long, I think. Footnote purposes, yeah, right there. Note A is your, um, significant accounting policies. Uh, first for, first couple pages, just, uh, talk about City of Meadville, uh, and dealing with your accounting policies, and the entities related to the City of Meadville and your component unit, uh, so we won't go into detail on that. I would tick you and highlight on page 32, right in the middle of the page, cash and cash equivalents. The city was in excess of FDIC coverage by 388,769, and that was as of December 31st, The city was in excess of FDIC coverage by three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven sixty-nine, and that was as of December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Next footnote that we, that we highlight for you is on page thirty-six. This is the breakdown of your accounts receivable. Uh, general, as you can see, most of it relates to refuse, utilities. Your parking fund and then your total, and then the component unit is required to be disclosed there also. Next page, page thirty-seven is your capital assets. Uh, this footnote on a couple of pages here, uh, starts where you start out with fixed assets, uh, acquisitions. And what was depreciated and your ending balances. It's disclosed for governmental purposes and also your parking fund for business-type purposes. Note F is your due from or to other funds. Uh, you can see they tie out the one point eight nine million dollars. This is something that Debbie and I, I think after, later in the year here, are gonna review some of this and possibly approach counsel on some of these items. Note G on page thirty-nine, this footnote goes about the next three or four pages, this is your long-term debt. This is each bond's balance as of December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. On page forty in the middle of the page, misses in thousands. In the middle of the page, your bonds was at fifty thousand, five hundred and eight thousand, uh, as of December thirty-first. The section below that on page forty is the parking fund, where is at two point seven million dollars. Page forty-one is just required disclosures, uh, where each bond was at the beginning of the year, what occurred during the year, and where the balance was at the end of the year. Along with the parking fund, uh, below that on page forty-one. Carries into forty-two, giving each maturity, total maturity of the bonds for each year at the top of page forty-two. Along with the middle page of your interest that's expected to be paid, um, if all the terms held through, uh, maturity of each bond. Uh, note M on page forty-five. I won't go through each paragraph, I've just highlighted here, this is where each, um, uh, receivable is highlighted that the city has with each respectable entity. And it describes, uh, each entity that rates to in the balance, it is at twelve thirty-one. Uh, then we get into note S and note T. Uh, note S is your pension. How I broke it down is I put note S pension plan police. And after you go about ten pages, it goes pension plan firemen, and about ten more pages is pension plan non-uniform. So it's all note S, but I broke it down so you can kinda see which, uh, the detail that relates to each one. Most, almost all this information is footnote comes from your actuary report. And, uh, I do audit those numbers and test some of the, uh, the census that's provided for the report. Uh, for each section, I'm just gonna highlight, uh, such, on page forty-eight, I'm gonna highlight point two. To the police, so your total pension liability, uh, per the actuary calculation was at sixteen million, three ninety-four. Your fiduciary net position is at eleven million, seven twelve. Showing you a net pension liability of four point six million relating to the police. And page fifty-eight. This is where the, the firemen's detail starts out with the actuary numbers. Again, I'll just highlight point two. Total pension liability was seven point eight million dollars. Uh, net position calculated was at six point one million, giving you a net pension liability of the one point six seven nine. This is as of twelve thirty-one. And the last section, page sixty-eight, with the non-uniform on point two, total pension liability of twenty-one million. Plan fiduciary net position of fifteen million, showing you a net posi- pension liability of six point one million. And new, well, the new footnote, it was there somewhat last year, but now it's in much greater detail, Gatsby seventy-five is note T. That goes from pages seventy-eight, uh, through the end of your footnotes. Uh, so on page seventy-eight, uh, similar section near the top there, it's labeled components of net OPEB liability. So, per the calculation of the actuary reports performed, your OPEB liability is at three million, sixty-six thousand, two seventy-one. Uh, there is no net, uh, fiduciary net position, so your total net O- your net OPEB liability is at three million, sixty-six thousand, two seventy-one.
And Clint, can I interject there?
Sure.
That's essentially the estimated liability, right? The, the post-retirement healthcare benefits, that's police and fire, those are the two unions that have bargained post-retirement healthcare. Um, we ha- we have no savings towards that, right? There's no fund to fund that, we pay that as we go. Uh, and so, that's built in essentially the cost, the annual cost that's built into our annual operating budget based on the year, but that's the total estimated liability, essentially of everyone that's out there.
If every, if everything met through all those calculations, yeah, that's would be the liability out there through, throughout the sixty-eight individuals that were in the planned membership at the top of page seventy-eight. That is really the rest of the footnotes, and I'm not gonna get into detail, uh, on the rest of the pages on the footnotes. Uh, so I'll skip to page six eighty-five. And this letter, maybe I'd rather see internal controls. Uh, so for internal control purposes, there were two weaknesses noted, and actually I'll just have you go to page eighty-seven. One is the lack of segregation of duties, um, we talked about this in prior years. Uh, nothing unusual there, uh, but city's response is that, uh, due to the size of the city, it would not be cost beneficial to hire additional accounting personnel at this time. Uh, the other item though was a time card approval, uh, during the sample that was performed, uh, there was, um, time cards that weren't approved. Um, so the city's response is that there'd be more consistent procedures that will be adhered to for approval of the respectable time cards.
Let's all speak to that, we have this, we've had this finding in the past.
It wasn't you this time.
It was not me this time, but we won't name names.
No.
Uh, we, we do have, we have pretty strong procedures in terms of, and, and when Clint does a sample, right? You literally do a sample, he happened to find at least, I don't know how many, two instances, at least I'm aware of, or more.
I think it was three.
Okay. And his, and what is your sample size, I don't even know.
It would've been forty.
Okay. Well, that's not a great percentage then, to have a forty that you, right? Um, so there's, appears to be a weakness in one department that we'll work on. We have strength in those procedures internally to ensure that supervisors are signing off on each employee's time.
Uh, then, the last two pages of the audit, pages eighty-nine and ninety. This is breaking down those non-major funds, it was on your government-wide statements. Um, I will go into detail on these, I think you can see the funds that make up those total balances, um, and that was on page eighteen, A and B, that make up these totals. So, overall for the audit, uh, the DCD report has been submitted to the state. And, um, everything's been concluded at this time, really. Any, any questions?
Clint, I have a couple of questions. Looking at page twenty-eighth and just as an additional reference, page forty-eight. And correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
Uh, it appears that the annualized, uh, return on police pensions for a three-year period was four point three-three percent. For fire for the same period, it was three point eight-three, and for non-uniform, it was two point six percent. On the other hand, Dow Jones Industrial Average annualized ten point oh-eight, and that includes two thousand and eighteen when it lost six percent. So it seems that our pension funds are severely lagging in return compared to one market index.
Okay.
Referring to page forty-eight, uh, uh, section three, the discount rate. I suspect if you extrapolated to a ten percent return, we would have basically no unfunded liability, is that correct?
A ten percent return would definitely limit the liability, yeah.
So, we may have a separate issue about, uh, trying to boost the yields on our pension funds?
Yeah, you, you might wanna look into that, where it's, you invested that, potentially. Uh, and, and throughout the audits that I've done, two thousand and eighteen, the end of the year was down for everyone significantly in their investments.
May I ask you, you have any questions? John, did you follow through with that?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, it's quite a lot to do, but I can just put my phone.
Okay. Any questions that you might have without seeing in the paper?
Oh, it's John Hart.
Yeah.
Sean, your questions?
Counsel, I just wanna point out on page twenty-two then is the, the, essentially in the general fund, the excess revenue of a hundred and nineteen thousand. That's essentially after we had transferred funds that ultimately paid the settlement that we, for the council adopted earlier this summer, so, um, it was Gillingham versus city of Meadville settlement. Um, it was essentially excess revenue from two thousand and eighteen that paid that settlement, this is resulting after that, did I state that correctly, Deb?
Yes.
Okay. And then on page thirty-three, I'll point out, so the, there's a reference of the rate stabilization fund balance, um, of three hundred and forty-three thousand at the end of two thousand and eighteen. I'll just remind counsel that the twenty-nineteen budget, um, brought in two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that into the twenty-nineteen budget. So, though that was the cash balance at the end of twenty-eighteen, um, the twenty-nineteen budget called for bringing in two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that rate stabilization fund. So it's just a, something to think about as we head into the budget, um, the next few weeks.
What page are you on?
Uh, thirty-three.
Yeah, bottom, bottom of page thirty-three.
Mayor, typically we'd ask for a motion to accept the audit.
Okay.
You got this question?
Okay. Could I ask?
I will submit.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Reva?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Thank you, Clint.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Clint, I got a question.
Sure.
This is what, about four years you've been doing this now?
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, ma- maybe five or six years, yeah.
Okay. Things are getting easier, um, I know that, you know, there was a lot of changes when we have staff changed and, and from the last auditor and stuff, so.
Right.
Things are calling in okay?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, last year I had to transition staff, so it was, uh, it worked out, yeah, it's fine.
Great. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
No problem.
And Deb, thank you, and Andy, cause I know it takes a lot to get through this lot. I mean, thank you.
Thanks, Clint.
Andy, anything else under yours that you?
Uh, no, your honor.
Uh, old business, uh, ordinance first and second reading, fire prevention code.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending part fifteen, fire prevention code of the Meadville municipal code to include, as part of the commercial fire inspection program. Requirements for daycare services and requirements for carbon monoxide alarms within daycare services.
Motion, please.
Sure.
I'll second. Second? Discussion, Andy?
Um, counsel, I think we've, yeah, I'll hand it over to Gary, just by, this is our, um, I, we've reviewed a draft of this prior, the prior reading. Um, this just comes to counsel as a, primarily as a response to the daycare fire in Erie, this is us taking our existing commercial fire inspection ordinance and amending it to add some definitions, um, for daycare services and, and add them to the annual inspection program.
Right, so this would govern any in-home daycare, um, whether it's group daycare or family daycare. Uh, would essentially, uh, apply to international property maintenance codes and international residential codes applicable, uh, inspections, annual inspections, um, with the additional requirement of the carbon oxide detector, which is not in the property maintenance code.
I'm just curious, was there any daycares that had any questions on, on this ordinance?
Fire department, Chief Haskett was gonna be reaching out to them to talk, talk about that, we haven't heard anything, I haven't heard anything directly from it, I'm not sure what Chief has heard.
I know, I have not heard anything. Mayor, counsel hasn't either. Okay. So the changes were made that Jim had asked for?
Yes.
Okay. Jim, you're satisfied with the changes?
Yes, I am.
Sean, anything with it? Yes? I, I think this is a, a good thing that we're doing, just, just for the safety of those in the residence and the kids, so. But that'll ask for a roll call.
Reva?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. John, I'm sorry, I didn't get to, uh, ask if you had any input.
No, I'm pretty familiar with everything that's going on, so there's nothing more to add.
Okay, I apologize, I forgot you're on the phone there for a minute. So, we got the second, motion please? Um, second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Reva?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. B, resolution authorizing signatures for management operating agreement.
Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too. As in for a binding and effective agreement with the city of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties there too.
Motion, please? Second?
Second.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah, so counsel, we did review this at the last meeting as well, um, this is a, just by way of update, this is an agreement between the city and the redevelopment authority. Counsel is aware that the end of last year, um, the redevelopment authority, um, moved in a different direction and realigned more closely with the city in terms of staffing model. Um, and ended their staffing, but then provided resources to the city for a new director of community development position. We've long had an agreement with the authority related to fiscal management, um, but this new agreement, you'll see services provided on the first page. Um, is the city providing, um, overall management and operation staffing to the RDA. Uh, for all points of contact and communication to serve as liaison to the redevelopment authority board of directors. Um, to provide assistance in loan packaging related to the various loan funds, um, and then all the finance, budgeting, accounting, um, and other finance-related services. Um, and it does call for a, uh, ninety thousand dollar annual payment from the RDA to the city, that was in their adopted budget for twenty-nineteen and ours frankly reflected. So this, this agreement simply memorializes what we, the practice we've had, um, since January first essentially and going forward. Um, the redevelopment authority board did review and approve this at their meeting, and so they've already authorized signatures on the agreement last week.
Here, I'm sure you went through all that.
Yes, sir.
You're satisfied with. Any questions from counsel? Roll call.
Reva?
Aye.
Donahue?
Aye.
Bataglia?
Aye.
Mangela Bitner?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Uh, under the new business discussion of stormwater facility easement.
I'll, I'll tee it up and then I'll introduce Bob and, um, uh, so. Uh, I think in, in my, some preparatory notes to counsel, um, back in the early seventies, Bob will correct me in the timeframe and give us real dates, but. Uh, with the development of the downtown mall property, there were various development agreements that the city had entered into with tri-county developers. For various activities of moving, realigning rights of way, stormwater infrastructure. And it's been some time, those development agreements actually call for easements that could be provided to the city that, that ultimately never were. Uh, and so there is a draft easement agreement in the packet. And for a number of months, um, Bob has been working through his legal counsel, which is actually the Shaper Law Firm. Been working with Bennett, who has been, uh, doing a lot of field verification and mapping and looking at the prior development site plans, looking at our current stormwater system. So that we can properly memorialize and document the easements that were contemplated in those development agreements. So, it's probably more proven, and I'll, and I'll be quiet like Gary and or Bennett take it from there, and Bob's here to answer questions. It'll be more telling to look at the map though of, of what we're.
Do we have the map?
We do. A big picture from a, a legal perspective, counsel. In summary, there's an agreement that dates back to, one of the development agreements dates back to nineteen ninety-one. And that agreement provided for relocation of cer- certain stormwater, uh, facilities. Those were built by. Those were built by the developer, Tri-County, and there's specific requirements that the city would then maintain. That's in both parties' interests, right? Obviously, the city has an interest. When you look at the map, there is a lot of city stormwater that flows into these facilities located at the downtown mall, just because of their geographic location. So it's something that the city wants to make sure is working right, or else probably downtown would flood, right? If those were, were clogged, for example. So there is a requirement, I've looked at the agreement and it's clear, to maintain certain facilities. Where we've been dealing with complications, and Mr. Moss can, can chime in with Bennett, is mapping which lines are city facilities, right, that we'll be maintaining, and then how we, how we map that out.
Sure. So I just put the map up behind you. Probably the easiest way to explain this, and Bob, again, please chime in.
Yeah.
I, I presume this is Bob Moss, the partner?
It is.
Hello, John.
Bob said hello. Can you hear him all right?
Yeah, how you doing?
So probably the, the easiest way to start explaining it, and Bob, you would know dates on this far better than I would. So initially, the downtown mall area was kind of a continuation of downtown, so the original city building was on that site, and probably best to just start with an old photo. So this is a nineteen thirty-five aerial of the city, back when we still had a roundhouse. Lincoln Recycling is now in this area, this would be Mead Avenue coming over. This is the original city hall and park behind it, which is.
Lot for it.
Yeah, also, on a painting behind you as well. So where this all starts out, this is part of the French Creek Canal that came over, wraps behind C&amp;J Industries, and then it went into a stormwater culvert that ultimately snakes around like this and dumps out underneath what is now the French Creek Bypass. At that time, it was railroad tracks, and that's in the vicinity of the Bolt Place store. So fast forward to development of the downtown mall. There was parking lot drainage added in, roof drainage, and ultimately, when we get into the construction of the building that is now Tops, the Center Street right-of-way used to continue straight through, back in the early nineties, development agreement for that building. It references shifting the right-of-way for Center Street further south. That then included a realignment of stormwater facilities, as well as water and sewer that previously would have run directly under the building, they've now been shifted south as well. Go back to.
That building was originally out, what, another forty or fifty feet, wasn't it, when they redid Tops? And when it went to Thurl for Tops, they actually moved the building back?
They, no, there was, originally there was a building up in the parking lot that we tore down, and the, the street, the Center, Center Street, the, the front of the Tops building is just, I don't know if it's just over, it's just over the line by, over the original line, and the relocation was done. It, it wasn't very many feet, there wasn't a whole lot of change. In other words, the building was, all this was planned out before any construction started.
Oh, okay.
Yes, there was no removing or relocating after the fact.
Oh, okay.
It was all part of the original plan.
Oh, all right.
And this plan I just threw up there, this is from the construction of the now Tops market, and you can see here the former building that stood in what is now parking lot, this here being the now Tops building. So the orange here is stormwater facilities that used to exist in the Center Street right-of-way. Those were removed when the right-of-way was shifted south and realigned with this newer, lower yellow line. Like I said, water and sewer were also realigned at that time as well. Also, with the construction of the building, there were some right-of-way agreements and shifting around of parcels for the whole intersection of Walnut and Boynton, so that they could have the truck loading dock. And ultimately, what we've found going through construction documents that Bob generously provided me to make scans of, is that when Tops was built, there really wasn't any other way to direct the stormwater and even some other utilities like power lines without going underneath the Tops building. So the, and I'll zoom out here, the old French Creek Canal, this is probably too zoomed out, used to wrap around here, this is C&amp;J Industries wrapped around, and this black line on, to the east, this is that original four-by-four, four-by-five concrete box culvert that I was mentioning in the nineteen thirty-five photo. What was done when the building was built is, starting in roughly the same location, a fifty-five to sixty-inch big corrugated metal culvert pipe was run down underneath the Tops building. That then ties in with the realigned stormwater on Center Street, which is also very large culvert pipe, and then ultimately runs down along the edge of the parking lot to where it ties back into that original concrete box culvert, goes under the bypass and discharges back into a stream. So the easement that we're talking about is really to parse out which facilities are the cities to maintain, what we had agreed to maintain back in ninety-one, the development agreement was signed, which facilities are the downtown mall's responsibility. So for example, on that, these three pipes are all runners that came off of roof drains for the mall proper, they all feed into a catch basin and manhole owned by the downtown mall, the downtown mall's private pipes that then eventually tie into the city system and discharge into that large culvert pipe. Bob, anything to add on the timeline there?
No, I think, I think you've stated it accurately. The, you may wonder the reason why we're twenty-some years or thirty-some years, no, twenty-five years later. It was one of those things that just got kicked down the road. You know, I tried several times, the city tried, there's no blame to show here, it's just a matter that the agreement called for, in order to build the building the size that Riverside wanted, we had to put it, as you said, it's that dark section, that rectangle is, is the building up there. And there was just no way around, so we, we decided to go underneath, and the city worked with us, its engineers and the manager and so on, and put together the agreement that we have, and that agreement was, was agreed upon and signed. It's the exhibit or the easement, Gary, I guess you'd call it the easement, that we, was never really finalized, to give you the right to do what you say you're going to do as part of the agreement. And, and it's important to the city in order to make sure, as they said, to get your drainage, but also important to make sure that that thing, the integrity of that pipe or that drainage is good, because it goes underneath the Tops food store. And the agreement calls for the maintenance of it underneath the, underneath the structure to be through the structure, not through Tops soft drink aisle.
Through the pipe, not through the building, is what the agreement called for.
Yeah, yeah.
So that pipe was put in when, ninety-one?
Ninety, actually ninety-two.
What's the life expectancy, I mean?
So the, for that larger corrugated steel culvert pipe, we did a camera inspection earlier this season using the Sewer Authority's crawler cam. Ashley Porter has not yet reviewed it, but to my non-engineered stamp of approval, it looks like it's in pretty good shape. Nothing jumped out at me as being a gaping hole or a big rusted area or anything like that. And we've, we've previously had one issue with the pipe, one or two summers ago now, but that was in the section where it's in the parking lot. So under the facility easement agreement, where the pipe goes underneath Tops, we would not have the surface ability to go in and, like Bob said, go through the dairy aisle to get to the pipe. But for where it's in the parking lot, in those areas, we would have surface access if need be. So two summers ago, there was a slight issue near a catch basin, there'd been some undermining of washed-out material and caused a bit of a depression in the parking lot. We were able to go from inside the pipe, re-mortar the joint between the sections of corrugated metal, patch it back up, backfill, and were able to do that repair relatively easily. So as far as overall lifespan, what was intended when it was first put in, I'm not sure, but condition currently looks pretty good.
So the, the upper line, black line, does not exist any longer, correct? Or is it still there?
It's still there.
Is it used?
Yeah, I believe so. So this one is, no, this is a third one. I don't have the full foundation plan loaded up in the GIS at the moment. But the, so the Tops building itself, and Bob, again, please correct me here, when it was built, if you look at the foundation plan, there's two different areas where the footers for the building specifically have callouts of, there's a culvert in the ground here, we're going to go around them and structurally, you know, place the footing around this culvert, it'll be a structural element. So that indicates that at the very least, it was still there in the ground, possibly still open as a cavity, and designed around just to ensure that there wouldn't be any trouble with the building and potentially uneasy ground there. In my poking around, trying to figure out exactly where everything runs, it's my current understanding that that culvert does still exist, is still open, and probably flows some volume of stormwater, though at this point, I'm not sure how much.
Have we had a camera done on it?
Just curious. We have not. So that one, it was just earlier this week that I began to suspect it might still be active.
The reason I'm asking this is we want to make sure that when we do this, that we're, we're going to do it the right way this time. So can you take and bring me up the black line again?
Sure.
I'm sorry, counsel, I just have some questions that I want to get answered. So our responsibility would be both of those black lines in this agreement, then? My understanding not correct?
The, the easement would cover whichever stormwater facilities are determined to be the city's responsibility.
Well, that's what we're trying to determine tonight.
So, prior to tonight, Mayor, we, we were, when we reviewed this, we knew, it's hard to do without a partner.
Sure.
So we knew that this line was active.
Okay.
And the city's responsibility for the development agreement.
The city's responsibility.
Okay.
It takes a little bit of a corner here, and that was an area that, that Bennett focused on, in that it continues here, also the city responsibility, as well as, this yellow line?
Yeah, the yellow line.
As well as this yellow line here as well, which are all key city facilities. We had discussed the other one, where we thought that that was probably not active, that's now coming up, it might be, so that one's.
To my knowledge, it is not active.
Right, right.
But there could be sewage.
My, my concern is if we're going to do this and we're taking the responsibility of, of the easement, then we want to make sure we're correct on the other one, whether it's flowing or not.
Right. And, and we had talked that that, we didn't think it was active, so we hadn't included it in the plan for the city to maintain that, then it's still looking at that to clarify.
Is that something we would add on later, then, or, I mean?
I think we would propose a try and capture it all in one agreement. I think we just want to do some continual verification of the, the old line to the east that.
As far as, as Tri-County was concerned, that was not something you were concerned about to include in this easement. It's only in doing our due diligence, we're wondering why might there water, be water in there? But your understanding is that was not what you needed covered under the ninety-one agreement, is that right?
The ninety-one agreement covers the line that's on the left-hand side of the building. As it, as our understanding at the time that there would be little or no flow to the, to the other one.
And, and part of what.
The other one's a contrary structure, I believe.
Yes.
Yes.
And part of what initiated me looking further into that, I don't know if we'll be able to read it on here, but it, in the development plans for the building, which, again, that gets into a, what's in the plan on paper versus what was actually done when it was constructed for an as-built plan, I, I know that some stuff clearly would have been done differently when it was built. But this plan makes reference to new stormlines that carry the various roof drains from the Tops building that are supposed to tie into the existing four-by-four box culvert. So that made me initially wonder, is it possibly still active, assuming that those drains are tied in or not? But then, as I did more poking around, it appears that both the Walnut Street stormwater line, as well as that old culvert, have an open intersection where water can flow between them, even if it is plugged off at this end, there's no longer a, a head wall, it's now roadway. And additionally, this catch basin in front of the building, as best I can see sticking my head in it, it's again, an open flow of water between the old culvert and our existing pipe.
Counsel, just, go ahead.
If you move that out, the only reason I'm, I'm pushing this issue is because if we're going to do an easement, let's make sure we're doing it right, so we're not back ten years from now discussing this. Because if you take that, take that all the way out to Walnut Street, so if, if that is ours and it's going right underneath that building and there is water flow, that's why I think we need to get that tied into it.
So counsel from, from the legal.
Yeah.
Can I, can I butt in here?
Sure.
I, you know, you guys can vote on this and do whatever you want tonight, but this is something that I can't understand unless I really look at it. Would you mind table on this? I have every confidence in Bob Moss, engineering kit and building, but, you know, I'm, I'm really not able to support this unless I can actually see it.
But tonight's just a discussion, John, so you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but I, I'm, I'm really not able to support this unless I actually see what's going on with it.
Well, from, from my understanding this, John, it would appear that there was an agreement back in nineteen ninety-one, we don't have a copy of that agreement.
We do.
Well, I don't.
Right, right.
But I'm assuming that you've stated that what's in that agreement, and in that agreement, we agreed, so we just forgot to put Exhibit A in there, or whatever.
It was actually contemplated to be done later, it says that, that the developer.
Okay, it was never done.
It was never done.
But if the agreement called for it to be done.
It did, it did. In that agreement, that was back, brushed and trunched on behalf of the city, yes.
There's no doubt we need to do it, we just need to get the, the Exhibit A, right?
Oh, I apologize for not being there because.
Doesn't matter if you're here, there's an agreement that says that we agreed to do it.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's no critical rush, I think from both sides, in our, in our firms involved, on behalf of Bob, my partner Jeff Miller and myself, the developer hasn't asked for anything or pressed anything more than was agreed to in ninety-one. Likewise, the city, from the city side, we don't really want to be in the business of maintaining stormwater facilities unless one, we agreed to them, which we did in ninety-one, certain facilities, right? And they're critical for us, right? So that's what Bennett, that one question on the one pipe, probably from Tri-County's ha, side, they would be happy, let's finalize the easement from what we knew and what developer expected, add that pipe later, but for, there's no rush, we don't have to do that tonight. If in the next week, we figure that out, and if the city believes as part of our stormwater facilities, we want an easement to that to maintain it, we should take it, right? But if not, it's not the, it's not Tri-County that's saying, add that, right? Is that correct? Right.
No, I'm actually saying, if we're going to do it, just find out if there's.
Let's find out.
If, if we have a responsibility.
Yes.
If you go back out, that goes beyond the property.
Right.
And if there's water still flowing through.
Right.
Then it's our maintaining it.
Right.
And the property.
And, and we've touched on, the one tricky part about this is, this is the same, for counsel's benefit, this is the same base agreement that we've done with a number of property owners, right, across the city in the past few years, right? The one thing that's a little unique about this is it was contemplated that the one, one of the key pipes goes underneath Tops. that the one, one of the key pipes goes underneath Tops', right? So that's where, back in ninety-one, they agreed, yes, you have surface rights to go in through a parking lot, but you can't dig through the dairy aisle, and that makes sense, right? Likewise, if a private property owner gave us an easement, we can't dig through their living room, right, to get to a pipe, so it's the same concept. I think the only question here is that one additional pipe that we thought was closed.
And Bob, you're okay with that, I'm thinking, right?
Yes, yes, the drawing will show you, the plan will show you the intent. The old culvert was actually, I think there's an end of it, it was actually cut off, it used to be a head wall.
Yes.
To our knowledge, there isn't any significant flow through that old pipe. We would not care, and I believe that the engineering will support that the new large pipe is to take care of all the issue. So, the best, if there was ever an issue, the best fix is just to fill the pipe. It's intended to be cut off anyway. And whether or not it was cut off is the issue.
It shouldn't be that if we don't run a camera.
When you bring it down, it terminated, or it terminated, there was a storm drain at the intersection of it and Center Street, and that, that storm, that culvert is still there. And there's no reason for any water from the north to be flowing underneath the building in that culvert. Because the other one is designed adequately to take care of all the drainage coming out from the north.
So, the head wall at the end, where in the nineteen thirty-five photo, let's see if I can zoom back in here. Where it initially had a head wall above Walnut Street pulling in that former canal, that whole constant stream of water that wraps around C and J Industries, that's all going into that new pipe that was placed that goes in a straight line into the building, to the west. So there's no stream running through it currently. Any water that would be going through it would be, depending on if things are capped off, if they're not.
If you go back out to Walnut Street, that's where my concern is. And I can, you know, take your time, but put your pointer up there, right there. Down a little bit, right there. We don't know if that's blocked off or not.
Correct.
Okay, so let's find that out. I mean, and I just want to make sure that we do it right, but I also want to make sure that there isn't water flowing through there that we're not aware of. And then down the road, we have to come to you and tear up your parking lot. So let's do it right now, if you're okay with that, Bob, and not a big rush. Counsel, is that all right?
We should be able to determine that pretty soon.
Yeah, just run a camera through it, I would assume.
I have a question. Is Center Street west of Water Street shut off? My memory is that the city vacated that or abandoned it some years ago.
Correct. So Center Street, after it was realigned more south, changing the right-of-way, moving the utilities, it was vacated, however, with that vacation, we still have our infrastructure in the form of right-of-way.
Right.
So.
So this will protect the city and the developer.
Yes, yeah, it's no longer our street to maintain on the surface. I know a portion of it was just paved this summer, I believe. But we still have facilities under it that we have the right to under the easement agreement.
So what we'll do is we'll continue with this, so, once we get that. Bob, we haven't really got to see you prior to this, but thank you guys so much for working with the city when we needed additional parking during the parking garage and all the stuff that you did. Didn't get to thank you for that.
It's a pleasure to do it, and we thank you for working with us on, I don't know, this, in particular, the development, the whole development of Downtown Mall. If it wasn't for City Council, and the city working with Walden and I, the developers, you wouldn't have the facility that you have, so, and we wouldn't have been able to provide that parking for you.
Hopefully, we won't need it again, but we know where we can come.
It's there, if you want it again, you would have to.
I appreciate it. John, did you have anything you want to add? We're gonna go ahead and, not table it, but we're gonna continue the discussion once we get the camera going down the other.
Yeah, it was pretty hard to understand.
You just put this on in a picture.
Right.
I just want to see this before we decide on this.
Sure.
Thanks a lot.
Oh, no problem.
Mr. Mayor, so that you know, my wife and I will be out of town after next week, but I don't, unless there's some reason for me to be in your presence, I think we can answer any particular questions you may have quite easily. I'm very familiar with it, and now what it is and so on, so.
All right, that'd be great.
Beg the opportunity to get to go.
No problem.
Thank you for taking your time, come tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution awarding a bid, if you guys like to go ahead and take off, feel free to do that. Resolution awarding a bid construction of concrete sidewalks in various locations.
Whereas bids for construction of concrete sidewalks at various locations in the city of Needville was advertised, we need both review and do on Monday, October seventh, two thousand nineteen. And whereas Public Works Support Coordinator Jeannie Smith reviewed the bids and per the bid recommendation letter dated October eighth, two thousand nineteen, recommended the city award the project to use a concrete and masonry. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Needville by and through the council of the city of Needville, hereby awards the bid to use a concrete and masonry in the amount of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Yet further resolved, the mayor, comptroller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to complete the construction of concrete sidewalks at various locations.
Motion, please. Is there a move? Second?
Second.
Discussion. Are these sidewalks for people who were cited for having?
Yeah, I'll refer to, this is essentially an abatement contract, so these are correcting sidewalks that have been recipients of doses of violation.
And then they didn't correct the violations in time, so they've contracted out to correct all of them, and we will bill the property owner. If that is not, if they don't pay in a certain amount of time, then we need the property. So, this isn't the one we take people to court for for not complying, it's the one we need the property.
So we bill them according to their share of the thirty-nine?
Correct.
Any other questions?
What I'll just note, though, is you'll see that the source, the proposed source of funds is from the twenty fifteen capital fund, so this was essentially an unbudgeted project. So in terms of abatement, right, whether it's sidewalk abatement, whether there's other, we will talk more in the adoption of the twenty twenty budget about budgeting funds for abatement purposes. The proposed source of this fund is from essentially reallocated capital, two thousand fifteen capital funds. In this case, we had reserved funds for, when PennDOT did the North Street project, they did sections of various local roads that we had budgeted for, and then ultimately came into our budget. So we have capital from that project that we would steer to cover the cost of this abatement, sidewalk abatement contract. However, we want to have a larger conversation when we adopt the budget on annually budgeting funds for this or other abatement projects.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Reala?
Hi.
Donahue?
Hi.
Pataglia?
You there, John?
Hi, hi.
Mangela Bitner?
Good evening, the button.
Sterns.
Hi. Okay, resolution authorizing submission Northwest Commission Greenway Block Grant Program.
Resolved by the council of the city of Needville that whereas the Northwest Regional Planning and Development Commission has established a Greenways Block Grant Program that provides funding to advance recreation, conservation, and heritage initiatives throughout the region through the implementation of the natural systems greenway recommendations. And whereas the city desires to complete and submit an application in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars to the Greenways Block Grant Program with a required city match of ten percent to continue improvements to Vicentennial Park. And now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Needville that the appropriate city staff are hereby authorized to submit the application to the Northwest Regional Planning and Development Commission's Greenways Block Grant Program in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars, and directed to take all action and to execute any and all appropriate documents associated with the grant application.
Motion, please.
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
This project was contemplated in the larger Vicentennial Park master plan that was completed a couple of years ago. We had applied for DCR funding that ultimately got moved to HP Way Park to finish the construction there. This proposal is sort of taking that out, trying to look at other funding sources to fund various components of that project. And this is a grant applica, grant opportunity through Northwest Regional Planning, Regional Planning and Development Commission, they're based in Oil City. They've got set aside funds from DCNR and DEP that they control, and we would propose applying to essentially completely redesign our boat launch. And I will say that the, our existing launch, which I think is probably thirty years old at this point roughly, today would be constructed, instead it's constructed almost at a perpendicular right angle. You would technically, a better design is to actually have that pointed downstream essentially, so it helps silting and other erosion things that would really change, or completely change the design of it. And that's what this project would be intended to do.
Any questions from council? Roll call.
Reala?
Hi.
Donahue?
Hi.
Pataglia?
Hi.
Mangela Bitner?
Hi.
Sterns.
Hi. Resolution recognizing Jeff Brockhurst upon his retirement.
It resolved by the city council of the city of Needville that whereas Jeff Brockhurst has served as a valued employee of the city of Needville for forty years, and whereas Mr. Brockhurst spent ten years as a foreman at Massa and five years in the Parks Department, and whereas Mr. Brockhurst worked for twenty-five years at Public Works, most recently as a foreman, and whereas Mr. Brockhurst has performed all the duties of his office with dedication, thoughtfulness, and efficiency, and whereas Mr. Brockhurst has elected to retire from active employment with the city of Needville effective October second, two thousand nineteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Needville that Public Works Foreman Jeff Brockhurst is hereby commended for his many years of dedicated service to this community and its citizens.
Motion, please. Is there a move? Second?
Second.
Comments, I guess we'll start with Sean, me. John, you have any comments?
Yes, I'm gonna miss him, he's really been a really good person out there.
I didn't know him personally, but forty years is a long time, congratulations.
We wish him another forty.
Jeff was an excellent equipment operator, and his skills will be missed.
We appreciate all the hard work he does and the dedication to the city, and wish him the best in retirement, have fun. Councilmember's statement. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Reala?
Hi.
Donahue?
Hi.
Pataglia?
Hi.
Mangela Bitner?
Hi.
Sterns.
Hi.
John, councilmember's statement, I'm gonna let you go first.
Well, I'm looking forward to the Halloween parade a couple of weeks, but, or, what is it, about a week and a half? Of course, don't forget that elections are never bad. That's important, that's why I should write the vote. That's pretty much all I have to say, Your Honor.
Okay, thanks for joining us on the phone tonight.
It was, it was a bit of a challenge, but it was fun, okay, good night.
Oh, hang on a second, John, do we have an executive session?
We do have a few, Your Honor, yes.
John, we have an executive session, would you like me to call you back when we get into the executive, or do you just want to be brought up today?
No, you better call me, just call me back, you can bring me up to date, okay?
All right, stay on until we adjourn. Sean.
All right. Just trick-or-treats next Thursday here in the city. The parade's on Saturday. Truck or treat in Diamond Park, it's all stuff that Andy had talked about. Penn State plays Michigan on Saturday, it's journey, it's a really big game. Penn State's number seven in the country, we'll see what's going on. That's about it.
Nancy.
Looking forward to the parade also, and I hope, it's too bad it wasn't this weekend because we're supposed to have really nice weather, so let's say our prayers that we have a nice night. And that's it.
Have a safe trick-or-treat, we'll see you at the Halloween parade. Hey, John, where are you at, by the way?
Pittsburgh.
Oh, okay. I guess what I want to do, Andy, I got a couple of questions. This one, I noticed that PennDOT on Washington Street and State Street are using stone to repair that, so I got a couple of questions. I've never seen that being done in the city, on a city street before. So is this the first time they've done that?
No, it's a regular practice of PennDOT, they call it spray patch, where you're using an oil, you're patching, you know, essentially potholes or low spots or sealing, but essentially using a tar-based product with an aggregate to seal and patch at the same time. It's, they have used it regularly, they have used it on state routes in the city.
So my question is, the loose stone, especially on State Street, I noticed a lot of loose stones. So is that getting into our stormwater, and is that gonna cause us any issues?
Yes and yes. And so it's a practice of, it's a practice of PennDOT that municipalities typically, who have MS four permits and are maintaining stormwater systems, aren't typically enjoy, and it's an ongoing conversation from a PennDOT maintenance. It's not one we've had locally yet, but I'm aware that the concern of that type of activity in active rural roads, it's a different story, but.
Yeah, this goes off into the ditches, but this goes into our stormwater.
Right.
And does it get flushed in through all of our system, or does it?
Yeah, I mean, we did work with PennDOT, and I forget what location our Public Works Department did to ask them to come back out and remove some excess aggregate, and then we've deployed our street sweeper also in a few instances, but.
So this is just a fancy name for tar and chip?
Tar and chip is more of a whole surface, this is patching, but it's a similar, not an altogether different process.
Well, my concern was the extra stone that's not sticking to the ground, and there is a lot of it if you go up State Street. So I'm just curious if we're gonna play havoc with our stormwater, so. Other than that, I wish everybody, you know, enjoy the Halloween parade, be safe out there. Make sure if you're gonna be handing out candy, that you have your porch lights on so the kids know that they can go there. And I'm sure our police will be out in force. Andy, along with the fire department?
Yes, indeed, yeah.
Okay, so with that, call for an adjournment.
Two executive session, Your Honor.
On what?
Personnel.
Personnel?
And personnel.
Second.
Roll call.
Reala?
Hi.
Donahue?
Hi.
Pataglia?
Hi.
Mangela Bitner?
Hi.
Sterns.